Good evening, everyone. Welcome to June 4th, 2020 City Council Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and having gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be called via roll call. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during communication or communications to be recognized to speak. So this evening, we have Councillor Cox, Councillor McCarthy, Councillor Peck, Councillor Gilman. Let's see here, Councillor Memhard, Councillor Holmgren, Councillor O'Hara, Councillor Nolan, and myself, Councillor LeBlanc, present for this evening's City Council meeting. Before we start the meeting, I would like to start off with a brief moment of silence. We lost one of our good friends recently, Ray Lamont. Ray has followed the City Council and has been a writer and editor and everything else for the Gloucester Daily Times over the years. Ray's been very good to the City Council in the city, trying to provide the best up-to-date minute news. And just, so let's just take a brief moment and honor Ray Lamont at this moment. All right, thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. So the public shall have an opportunity to speak at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard on oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and this matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks prior to relative or disposition of the same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Is there anybody that would like to speak under oral communications? We have several people as attendees. So if you'd like to speak and you're on a device, you can do your raise hand button, and if you're calling in, you can press star nine. Okay, seeing none. Let me go back and correct myself too, because I think I said the meeting's June 4th. It's June 9th. I'm just trying, I'm a step ahead here. So I apologize. This is June 9th, not June 4th. If it was June 4th, we wouldn't be here right now. All right. Thank you, everyone. No one's for oral communications. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is scheduling update. We got a temporary amendment to the Gloucester zoning ordinance pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 5, and Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 1.11.2, parentheses, to amend Gloucester zoning ordinance by adding a new Section 5.33, temporary zoning relief to businesses during COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Joanne. So this is just an update on what we're trying to do for the city. If any councillors have any questions or the public has any questions, I want to direct everything toward Chip so he can answer this. So the COVID pandemic has a big impact on small businesses throughout the country. Businesses in Gloucester are suffering. As you know, the city process for outdoor seating approval requires a special permit and can take several weeks, if not a couple of months. This will not work for those businesses who need to get up and running quickly so they can survive. In order to help them, the mayor has put forward this zoning amendment to help streamline the process for those small businesses that wish to allow outdoor seating this summer. As you know, reviews are conducted in the following order when the zoning amendments are referred to the City Council. It goes to the planning board to hold a public hearing, and it goes to BND to hold a public meeting, and then it goes to the City Council to hold the final public hearing and enacts or rejects the proposal. Unlike amendments to the General Code of Ordinances, which will go into effect 30 days after they are passed, amendments to the zoning code are governed by Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 5. It may take effect upon the first notice of a public hearing for that proposed amendment. So with the June notice on June 5th, the City Council could begin reviewing and approving temporary outdoor use permits immediately without requiring special permitting. The rest of the timeline for review and possible approval for the temporary zoning ordinance is fluid and just needs to run its standard course. It is still important that PND and the planning board prepare to recommendations prior to the City Council public hearing. The following proposed outline is, the first is June 3rd, 2020, suspicious special City Council meeting on the above matter was referred to the Planning Board and Planning and Development Subcommittee. On June 5th, 2020, the legal notice appeared in the Gloucester Daily Times for a City Council public hearing on June 23rd, 2020. On June 17th, 2020, PND will refer this matter, of course, there's a plane flying over my head, PND will refer this matter on the agenda and continue it until July 8th. On June 23rd, 2020, the City Council will continue the public hearing until July 14th. On July 24th, 2020, the Planning Board will have a public hearing and make their recommendations to the City Council. July 8th, 2020, the Planning and Development Committee will vote, and on July 14th, 2020, City Council public hearing and City Council vote. I would also like to note that the governor did issue an executive order on June 1st, allowing for the relaxation of the process for the following outdoor seating. Nevertheless, the city solicitors recommends that we continue or enact our own temporary zoning amendment in the form of this one before us. I hope this clears up any questions you may have. If you have any questions, please contact Chip Payson, our city solicitor. So that's where we stand. And so this special City Council meeting we had last week will allow us to enact this and expedite this a little bit more quickly than if we were to go through the normal process, because if we go through the normal process, it would, summer would be over and these businesses would not be able to function without us doing this moving forward. Like I said, this is just an update. If anybody has any questions or comments, please reach out to Chip. He's in another meeting at the moment, and he's unable to attend this meeting now. So that being said, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is confirmation of new appointments.
All righty, so the confirmation of new appointment is Tim Good from Assistant Assessor to the Assessor. How you doing, Tim?
Good, thank you.
So just, I know you, and I know most of the council knows you, but just briefly tell us who you are, what you do down there, and what you're going to do.
Okay. I'm Tim Good. I currently serve as the Assistant Assessor and have since 2005. For 18 years prior to that, I was a real estate appraiser doing fieldwork, commercial and residential for a local company, and also part of the time working for a national company in a variety of management positions. Came to the city in '05, received a Massachusetts accredited assessor designation in 2010. Do a little bit of everything here as the Assistant Assessor. Field inspections, work in the office, research analysis, and be continuing to do those things along with having the ability to vote as a member of the board if the appointment is approved.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for Tim? All right. So I will make a motion. Ordinance and Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council appoint Tim Good as an assessor. Term to expire to 14/23. A nice move?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let me see if I got the roll call here. One second, everybody. Trying to use all my devices all at once. All right. So I think Councillor Memhard was the last one. So we have, was it John or was it Scott, the last?
It was Scott. Sean Scott's the roll call.
All right, Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councillor Peck.
Yes.
Councillor Cox.
Yes.
Councillor Gilman.
Yes.
Councillor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councillor LeBlanc. Yes. Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councillor Memhard.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed to appoint Tim Good as an assessor in the Assessors' Office. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much.
You know you have the council's support, and if you need anything moving forward, you guys have a good staff down there, but definitely reach out to any of us if you guys need anything.
Thank you, appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Jim.
Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
All right. Is there anybody that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
No move. Second.
Moved and seconded. Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councillor Peck.
Yes.
Councillor Cox.
Yes.
Councillor Gilman.
Yeah.
Councillor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councillor LeBlanc. Yes. Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councillor Memhard.
Yes.
Motion to accept the consent agenda passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of June 4th.
Councillor Cox.
Hello, everybody. We only have one item on the agenda, and that is to accept a donation. Let's see. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council accept under Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A, a cash donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Minogue Family Foundation to be used to benefit the ongoing efforts of the fire department, and I sub move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
This foundation has made numerous donations across the city, the Veterans Office. This is the first for the fire department, and they plan on applying it to the training account.
All right. Any questions? Donations are always good. We like that. Thank you, Councillor Cox. All right, so we'll call the roll. Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councillor Peck.
Yes.
Councillor Cox.
Yes.
Councillor Gilman.
Yeah.
Councillor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councillor LeBlanc. Yes. Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Councillor Memhard.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, councillors. Thank you, Councillor Cox. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please?
Is the Ordinance and the Standing Committee Report, and Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee Report of June 1st.
There are no items put forward. Next order of business?
Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of June 3rd.
Councillor Gilman.
There are no items to report, but I just wanted to mention that the public hearing on the wireless cell on pole in front of Two Salt Island Lane is continued in our next meeting, which is June 17th, and that's going to begin at 5:00, not 5:30, because we have a budget meeting at 6:00. So I just wanted the committee to be aware of that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gilman. And just to point a reference for you, I know these are poll petitions. I know this one's a different kind of poll petition. So just to make the planning and development aware that you guys can bump up any public hearing to a full City Council public hearing if you so wish, instead of having it at Planning and Development. I just wanted to offer that piece of information for you guys. So thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the first scheduled public hearing, Public Hearing 2020-017, Tax Increment Financing Agreement between the City of Gloucester and Cometier, Inc.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. DiStefano, would you like to start this off?
If it's okay, Steve, I would. I just want to introduce everybody who's here.
I'm sorry. All right. So let me do this the right way. Is there anybody? So I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor.
Jill.
Jill, go ahead.
Hi, Jill Cahill, Community Development Director, for the record. Yeah, it's a little awkward not in person. You really got this. I just thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the councillors. I'm just here tonight as the Chair of the TIF Committee, and I want to acknowledge all the people who are here and who have gotten us this far. Our Economic Development Director, Sal DiStefano, who was in charge of, took the lead on negotiating this TIF, the folks from Cometier, who have been great to work with, our partners at the state level. So you'll get to hear from Kara and Matt and Dylan later. Our folks at the state, Maria DiStefano's here, and Anna Marie Kirsten, who came and did a great job on her council workshop with you all. And I want to thank the Chair of BNF and all of you who participated in several meetings and the council workshop so that we could bring this forward. And don't let me forget, and I see him in the slide there, Gary Johnstone, the Assessor's Office. This is my first TIF as Community Development Director, and I have to say that the Assessor's Office is invaluable in this process. So he's here to help answer questions. He's been great to work with. And at a time when things are changing quickly, I think that we have real economic development happening here in the City of Gloucester is pretty incredible, and I hope that you all will support this tonight. We are really looking forward to having this company move and make their roots here in Gloucester. So Sal has the details all handed over to him.
Thank you, Jill. Mr. DiStefano, how are you?
Thank you. I'm doing all, Council President. Sal DiStefano, for the record, Economic Development Director, City of Gloucester. Thank you. It's great seeing you all here tonight. We're really excited about this opportunity. This has been months into making. As all of you know, we're in a global pandemic. Businesses are suffering. Many of you city councillors own your own business, and you could say firsthand the impact that it's had on not only your business, but your suppliers, your vendors, your friends. And I thank all of you for your support on the reopening task force and under the mayor's leadership. We've been working very hard on that. But you know, we're here today to put forward a TIF agreement that was being proposed by the TIF Committee, and it's gone through a Budget and Finance Committee, and I thank you for all of your input. But we're here with Cometier, Inc. They're gonna, I'm going to give them the floor shortly to talk about their company, but they're, to say they're a coffee manufacturer doesn't really do them justice. It's kind of a mix between Tesla and coffee. Really very cool. We're really excited to hear from them. Matt Robertson is a CEO and founder. We'll hear from him, as well as the other, his other colleagues, Kara Trishita and Dylan Maki will also speak on behalf of Cometier, Inc. So as you know, the City of Gloucester, we have limited tools to offer for incentives, and one of them is tax increment financing. So for those of you who are new to this, basically, it's an incentive that discounts not any tax revenue we're getting currently, but after the investment that they're going to make, which is going to be over $24 million in personal and equipment into the building, as well as adding 150 jobs over seven years. So they will probably experience property tax increase due to that investment. And when working closely with Gary and the Assessor's Department to estimate that. But bottom line is, we are proposing a seven-year TIF that will discount that increment on average of 50% of the increment. And it's going to be front-loaded, so much of the benefit is going to start in the early years, and then it will taper off as it's included in your packet. Also, we're partnering with the state, which is why Maria DiStefano is on this call. So they are going to be seeking state tax credits as well, and our hope is that this will help them in the transition. They're making a large investment. They want to bring jobs here to Gloucester. They're wonderful people to work with. They have a new and exciting product, and we want to be business-friendly. And I know a lot of you believe in that, and believe in economic development and jobs, which is badly needed right now, especially in this pandemic. So to see a company come forward and talk about investment and expansion, it's something that I know is very good for the city, and it's something that the mayor really wants us to promote and work together as partners with them. There was also a letter of support, I believe, issued by EDIC for this company. But so that's why we're here today, and I'm hoping to get your support on this TIF. And if it is approved by council, it'll be submitted by the mayor to the EACC, which is a state body that will ultimately approve this TIF, and that will be on the 18th. So without further ado, if it's okay with the council, I'd love for you to hear from Matt Robertson, who is a CEO. He's on here, and if it's okay with you, Council President, I'd love to turn it over to Matt.
Awesome. Thanks a lot, Sal, and thanks, everyone, for having us. I don't know if Dylan and Kara can talk. I know we're sharing the same login. We're all labeled as Kara, and I got kicked off audio, but I'll just kind of take the reins from here. But we're really excited about this opportunity. I see a lot of familiar faces, but just to remind everyone out, I am from the North Shore. I grew up in Ipswich and used to travel to Gloucester all the time. My parents used to be Gloucester residents, so to be able to build a company so close to home is just incredible. And Sal, you hit the nail on the head where, you know, we don't like to describe ourselves as a coffee company. We're really more of a technology company in the coffee space. So just to give everyone an introduction to our product, we essentially produce a new first-generation coffee capsule where we work with roasters around the country. For example, this roaster, Bird Rock, is located in San Diego. They're a specialty coffee roaster. They send us their beans, and we grind the coffee, and then we brew it. And to say that we brew the coffee sells ourselves short. We have designed new pharmaceutical-grade extraction techniques that we plan to bring up to Gloucester as our manufacturing home. So we get these beans in, we extract the best flavors of the coffee, and then cryogenically process the coffee and flash-freeze the coffee in this all-aluminum capsule. We then ship these capsules to consumers' homes on dry ice so they arrive frozen. The consumer keeps them in their freezer, and then if they're looking for a hot cup of coffee, they can either plop one of these into an existing curing machine, or they can peel off the lid of the capsule like this, and dump the coffee puck into eight ounces of hot water, and the coffee will melt in a matter of seconds. Now, the capsule after use rinses clean during use, and there's no grounds on the inside of the capsule after use, which makes these aluminum capsules a first-curbs-side recyclable pod in existence, which is awesome. We're really about sustainability, and we actually love how there's a nice wind turbine right behind the facility that we're looking at up in Gloucester. So anyway, to give you a little bit more background on the company, we've been operating out of Bedford, Massachusetts. We have a pilot facility, and we've executed on a test market that went incredibly well. I mean, this really is the best tasting cup of coffee you've ever had, and I wish I was here with all of you in person so I could demo the product for you, because it really is a taste-to-believe product. But we had a killer test market, and we're fortunate enough to raise a lot of money in this pandemic to invest in a town like Gloucester, in a facility like 21 Great Republic Road. Now, why do we need this TIF when we've raised, you know, such a large amount of money? Well, we're looking to scale a technology for the first time, which can be incredibly costly, and just getting the coffee to the consumer's home and looking at the entire supply chain from bean to cup, it's incredibly complex. And to really become efficient to the point that we're making money, that takes time, and immediately, we're not going to be making money. We're going to be burning a lot of money. So getting any support we can get from the town with incentives and grade and even help hiring. So these jobs that we're looking to bring to Gloucester are more skilled than a standard manufacturing job, just because this is first-generation technology. So I think I mentioned on my last call that our, you know, our last hire was a supply chain executive from Apple. So we are looking to bring well-paying executive jobs to the Gloucester area and really hope to develop a great, you know, relationship with Gloucester from not only the support perspective, but from the hiring perspective as well. So I believe that 150 jobs up in Gloucester is something that we could accomplish in the next two to three years. I don't think it'll take us as long as we've submitted, but we'd rather overachieve than under-deliver with what we've submitted. So again, we really appreciate all the support we can get. We could point to a number of other facilities in the Northeast where we could maybe get cheaper labor, where maybe the facility makes more sense logistically. We're shipping these capsules all over, but we think that Gloucester would be a great home for us with more skilled labor in the area. You know, Gloucester was home to the flash-freezing movement. The first industrial flash-freezing food or processing line was brought to Gloucester by Clarence Birdseye, so it feels great that we're, you know, continuing a tradition up in Gloucester. So we love it as our home. All of our engineers are in the Boston area and willing to make the commute. So we've already done a study of attrition risk. So right now, we're just looking for any support we can get financially from the city and from the town. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the product. I know Kara, who, I don't know, Kara, can we hear you? No, she doesn't have audio, but Kara's a nice coffee drinker. And a great part about our coffee capsules is there's a liquid extract on the inside that you're supposed to keep frozen, but it melts in a matter of two or three minutes. So if anyone likes iced coffee, which I used to be a Dunkin' Donuts iced coffee drinker, you can now make convenient iced coffee at home in a matter of seconds. So there we go. We got Kara making an iced coffee with Bill Belichick. Awesome. Dylan, I don't know if you had anything to add. I don't know if anyone recognizes Dylan. He was actually our first hire from Gloucester. He's helping us on the recruiting front right now.
Can you hear me? Yeah, we can hear you, Dylan. Awesome, yeah. So I'm a local Gloucester guy. My godson and nephew is Big Jim Distino's grandson. So look at that connection there, if you don't know me. But yeah, I mean, it's, when Matt contacted me and we started discussions, and I was like, oh, I enjoy coffee, and I was a big Dunkin's guy. But I switched over. I had my first cup of Cometier, and I was just absolutely blown away, and it's completely changed my drinking lifestyle. So I mean, the only issue is, once you start drinking it, it's going to be tough to go anywhere else and drink their coffee there. So that's the only issue. If you're traveling, make sure you bring some with you. But obviously, Gloucester is great. I know the community so well, born and raised here. And I just think this company with, you know, their values would be awesome here. It would really blend with the strength of our community, the sustainability front. I'm just really excited if this could be a great partnership here. And as a director of recruitment, it would make my life a lot easier if we were working out of Gloucester, because I know a lot of great people here. So you'd be making my life easier too. But it'd be a great combo, Cometier and Gloucester. So definitely appreciate the time and your consideration.
Awesome. Thanks, Dylan.
Thank you, Dylan. Thank you, Matt. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Vanessa?
Vanessa Krazek from the mayor's office. Just to echo some of the sentiments that Jill and Sal said, you know, economic development is a major priority for the city, and it has been for Mayor Taken, for her entire administration. She actually created the Economic Development Director position here in the city to do exactly what we're discussing here tonight, bringing businesses to Gloucester. And the investment that Cometier wants to bring to the city is exactly what that position was made for. So kudos to the CompDev team under Sal for negotiating this agreement. This seems like a no-brainer. You know, this would be great for the city. We look forward to a longstanding relationship with Cometier, and I hope you support this agreement tonight.
Thank you, Vanessa. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Thank you, Vanessa. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? All right, seeing none. Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? I'm just going to give it a second, because we have five attendees. I want to make sure that nobody raises their hand or tries to get on. Okay. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, is it was has is there any communications?
Yes, there are. There are two communication. One is from Cal Augustine from 22 Leonard Street in support and also from RB Bramble of One Cedar Lane. He's the co-chair of the Gloucester EDIC in support of this project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any counselor questions? Counselor Pat?
Not a question, but just a comment. As a 28-year member of the EDIC, I can say this is just the type of investment in the city of Gloucester that we look forward to seeing. And welcome Cometeer to Blackburn Industrial Park. I can't wait for that to happen.
Thank you, counselor. Is there any other counselor questions? Counselor Gilman?
Thank you so much. That was a great presentation. I have a question for our assessors' office, either Gary or Tim. My question is, I read in the packet that this will be for a seven-year duration, and I was just interested to know how you come up with that format in terms of how many years the TIF will be part of this this new buildup of this company.
So it's actually not from the assessors' office that that gets determined, but the the TIF committee itself wanted to do. We've done basically five-year terms, seven-year terms. We've done a few longer terms, but I'm trying to get away from longer longer durations in terms of the terms. What we did want to do is to, in a in a sense, it's give the biggest break at the start of the the TIF. So that's why you're seeing a bigger break on the incremental increase in value on the first year. And then by the end or the last year, the seventh year, it's down to about 12%. What it does work out to is about a 50% over over the term of the over the term of the TIF.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, counselor. Counselor O'Hara?
Yes, I was wondering if I got to ask the applicant if the applicant can explain as far as the jobs that they will create, what what type of jobs, what how many employees do they presently have, and what kind of other support the city of Gloucester as far as businesses could supply to the applicant. Thank you.
All right, Matt, did you get that? Because I know he was broken up a little bit on my end.
Yeah, no, I heard that, just that the type of jobs they were looking to create. So as mentioned, we're we're out of Bedford. That's where everyone is working right now. And we are going to move with the plan would be to move the entire company up to Gloucester. So we're talking about manufacturing jobs. We're talking about supply chain jobs. We're talking about marketing jobs. We're talking about just general operations jobs. So I mean, anything and everything. You know, our engineers, as I mentioned, our our team that built this this first generation pilot line, they would be moving up to Gloucester as well. So we're going to see a nice balance of engineering and technical jobs. But of course, on the manufacturing floor, we're going to need some some help on that side of things as well. So as far as what was the question more around what what do we need support with? As in, if I'm sending out JDs right now for laborers, what do we need? The answer really is a lot. Again, that's why our first hire after the fundraise was recruiter in Dylan, because we know that we need to hire rapidly. I think that, you know, I think we put eight eight jobs down through the the first year is what we would bring. I mean, I think that could be closer to 40 realistically. Again, we want to over-deliver with this. So we need we need automation engineers. We need marketers. We need head of digital. We need people who know supply chain, cold chain, frozen logistics. I mean, there's a there's a heavy lift here, and I know there's a lot of great talent in the area already. And I know we can find the right people, because we're, you know, an exciting company. And I I hope we have, you know, a great opportunity at finding great local labor, but also bringing some great people up to the North Shore as well. I I already know that, you know, if if, you know, we do make this move, there's a lot of people that would move with the company for for a closer commute, which I think would be would be great, because these are great paying jobs as well. So anything and everything, I hope that wasn't too general, but we have a heavy lift ahead of us. You know, we're we're only a team of 14 right now. And again, growing to the 150 and eclipsing that is 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 going to be a heavy lift, and we need experts on all fronts of the business.
Thank you, Matt. Counselor O'Hara, did that answer your question?
Yes. The the final part of the question was, as far as other companies within the city, what, if any, would the applicant be potentially utilizing?
Um, well, I'd say in general, of course, you know, I mentioned that the 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 flash freezing industry really, you know, was, you know, had its birth in Gloucester. So of course, if there's experts from a cold chain logistics standpoint in the area, we're going to look at them. I don't know how all of the companies are are doing in the area, but, you know, I I I think that there are several where we could find good skill sets. But I also know that, you know, we were able to find those skill sets elsewhere in the Bedford area. So I think it's going to be a great combination of, you know, competing with the labor force in Gloucester, and how do we compete while we offer higher-paying salaries? And also the combination of of getting people to to move up or commute to the Gloucester area. And, you know, we've been advertising Gloucester as what it is, and it's a beautiful beach town. So a lot of people, especially in the summertime, it's a great place to showcase. And there's a lot of people right now, especially with the with the pandemic, who are looking to move outside the city. So I think we'll be able to attract a lot of a lot of new laborers up to the area as well.
Thank you, Matt. Counselor O'Hara, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, Matt, just so you know, Gloucester's beautiful in the wintertime. Just so you know, buddy. I know. I'm just razzing you, bud. I know. You know how it is when you're in a tourist town, and everybody goes home. It's like a little bit nicer. All right, are there any more counselor questions? All right, seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing and call for the committee report, please. Counselor Cox?
Thank you. We do have two motions, so I'm going to read the first one first. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve a tax increment financing exemption between the City of Gloucester and Cometeer Incorporated in accordance with the Massachusetts Economic Development Incentive Program and Chapters 23A, 40 and 59 of the Massachusetts General Laws to be located at 21 Great Republic Drive for a term of seven years, ending in fiscal year 2028, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Counselor Cox? No?
No.
All right, does everybody understand what we're voting on? All righty, I'm going to call the roll. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Wholeheartedly, yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes, looking forward to that first sip.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Counselor Cox?
The second motion, Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve the following. One, adopt the tax increment financing agreement between the City of Gloucester and Cometeer Incorporated for property located at 21 Great Republic Drive. Two, approve that the project application and find that it meets the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 23A, Section 3F, in that it provides a reasonable opportunity to create jobs within the City of Gloucester as indicated in the TIF agreement. And three, authorize the mayor to execute the TIF agreement and submit the TIF agreement and the certified project application and all other necessary documents to the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and take any other actions as necessary and appropriate to implement the provisions of those documents. And I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Does everybody understand what we're voting on? All righty, I will call the roll. Counselor Nolan?
A good day starts with a cup of coffee, and I'm looking forward to a great relationship with them. This is a yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Wholeheartedly, looking for a forward to a a black ice Cometeer. Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes, and may I just say, in a time of uncertainty and strife, this is a welcome change. Thank you so much. Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Memhard?
It's just wonderful to see this facility being put back into life for the manufacturer and for the city and for all the jobs it'll create. Billy Stride, we're very proud. Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Yes.
Point of order?
Yes.
I I would like to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Cox. I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right, motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed. I was just thinking of my first sip of coffee from these guys. So if you need a taste tester, I'm sure you have nine taste testers available. We can only have a taste, though. And I made a nice espresso this morning this afternoon, and I'm looking forward to sampling your product and purchasing it in the future. So great job, guys. You have the full council support this evening. And anything you need, you know yourselves here, Maria, Gary, Jill, Vanessa, the mayor's office. If you need anything, definitely feel free to reach out to any one of us. We'll help you point you in the right direction to see what we can do for you. So great job.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
I just, as Chair of Budget and Finance, I just want to say how much that I appreciate the the team, the client, everybody pulling through for Gloucester as a whole. It was seamless in the meetings for Budget and Finance. The workshop was very informative, so I appreciate the state coming into our our aid with the workshop. There was a wealth of new information from when you and I started with our first TIF, a lot of changes and everything. So I really appreciate how everybody did it, participated, and it was just it it was it was easy. So I appreciate that, everybody. Thank you.
I agree, Counselor Cox. This is like Counselor Holmgren said, too, in a time of uncertainty, to have a business come to Gloucester, want to build and provide jobs. The mayor has just joined us, so Mayor Taken, we have just approved the TIF. Would you like to say something before we move on to our next item?
No, I was listening. You're right, 100%, all of you. That's right. And I remember Counselor Cox, and she knows I hate the tips, but sometimes we have to give a tips for them to actually do better than the companies that they have, but to also get state benefits, which we like. And that course I was there, too, just to listen on, and I think you guys are doing great. So no, I just came in just to see if you guys were still here. Yeah, and Counselor Cox and her point of order. I was just waiting for her to say something, but yeah. And so all good here, but thank you.
All right, Mayor, thank you. Once again, Sal, Jill, Maria, Anna Marie, everybody that was part of the workshop to bring us up to speed, not only on this TIF, but future TIFs. It's great to have these workshops, and we'll definitely have another one when we have another TIF coming forward. So great job, everybody, and we're looking forward to this company up and running. All right, that being said, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
All right, go do your job, Cara.
Yeah. Thanks, everyone. I just want to say we love and appreciate the support. We hope this is the start to a long, beautiful relationship. We're going to crush it. So thanks again.
All right, Matt, thank you, Dylan. Thank you, Cara. We'll see you soon. Thanks again. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
It's Public Hearing 2020-010, Special City Council Permit 2020-002, Essex Avenue, Number 99A, MAP 216, Lot 126, Gloucester Zoning Ordinance, Section 1.3.6B, Building Heights in Excess of 35 Feet, Section 2.3.4, parentheses 13, Marine Related Service Storage or Repair Unlimited Primarily in the MI District to the Commercial Fishing Vessels, and Section 5.5, Low-Land Requirements, Section 5.5.2 and Section 5.5.3 in the EB District.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to open the public hearing and continue it to July 14, 2020. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Public Hearing 2020-009, Special City Council Permit 2020-001, Ringa Sheet Road, Number 105, MAP 261, Lot 31, Gloucester Zoning Ordinance, Section 3.1.6B, Building Heights in Excess of 35 Feet in the R20 Low-Medium Density Residential District.
Madam Clerk, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to continue it until June 23, 2020. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Public Hearing 2020-011, Special City Council Permit 2020-003, Atlantic Road 163, formerly part of Number 171, MAP 73, Lot 41, a portion of former MAP 73, Lot 26. Gloucester Zoning Ordinance, Sections 1.8.3, Standard to be Applied, 3.1.6B, Building Heights in Excess of 35 Feet, 3.2.2, Footnote E, Dimensional Requirements for Multi-Family Dwellings and Their Accessory Uses Other Than Signs, Reduction in Distance Between Buildings, 2.3.18, Conversion to or New Multi-Family Apartment Dwellings, Seven or More Units. Section 5.7.5, Special Permit Criteria for Major Project in Section 1.10.1, parentheses A, parentheses 1, parentheses 2, Jurisdiction of the City Council in the R20 Low-Medium Density Residential District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to open the public hearing and continue it to July 14, 2020. Next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the update on the Stage 4 Park Advisory Committee by City Council Representative Counselor John McCarthy.
Counselor McCarthy, how's things going up at Stage 4 Park?
Well, I ride through every day on my daily ride. It's it's actually been very busy up there during the the weekdays. People have taken advantage of the park. They're very well spread out, and it just seems like it's being utilized a lot more on weekdays. Hopefully, that'll equate into some revenue for the city. There haven't been any meetings that I know of of the committee. Obviously, there not a lot to have right now. I did talk to Mike Hale today. He informs me that the visiting center will be ready at the end of next week, the renovation. They've planted, I don't know, almost 20 new trees, replacing trees that were sick. The cannons, he's told, are on schedule. One of them is in Kentucky, being the cradle's being rebuilt. The engineering, as far as the the new plan and what they're going to come before, the council for CPA funds and the CPA committee is going to be assumed by the DPW from the advisory committee. And Mike's and and said that this is just a natural progression from the advisory committee to the people that are going to have to put the work forward, and that he would be doing that and bringing that in the next round of CPA applications. And that's about all I have to report from Stage 4.
All right, Counselor, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order is the Counselor's request to the mayor.
All right, Counselor McCarthy, you're up first.
I have none this week.
All right, Counselor O'Hara?
Just want to thank everyone for continuing to participate and just all time. The mayor for working hard to bring back some normalcy to to our city, Aban, and the DPW and the first responders for everything that they've done through this time of of unknown and everything else. So I want to thank everyone.
Thank you, Counselor. Let's see who's next. Counselor Memhard?
No, no, nothing for the mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Cox?
Um, yes, please, uh, unfortunately, I have a few. I'd like to request that the Treasurer's Office review the parking kiosk at the Rogers Street Lot, the I four C two. We had the same problem last year with the kiosk does not allow for people to pay prior to, um, the meter enforcement hour of nine eight AM. A lot of fishing charters go out of there at three, four o'clock in the morning, and they all come back with tickets on their car because they're unable to pay. This is not a new problem, we discussed it last year, and I'm not sure why or how it reverted back, because I knew, know it was fixed at one point. But that's, with the charters going back out now, um, I, they have been reporting to me that they're having problems with the kiosk again. I also asked that DPW request to the contractors for the Trastreet area to remove the orange barrels, telling people that they cannot park from seven AM to three PM, um, while the work is not being done. We've had these for over two weeks now, um, it's confusing the hell out of people, and they just need to be moved back down to Burnes Field until they're ready to proceed with the work. The City Council website, Budget and Finance, when you go to view most recent, it goes to the very first one in January, so that needs to be fixed. Um, and I just want to give everybody an update, budget meeting wise, um, we are going to cancel the Wednesday, six-ten meeting for tomorrow morning, there are no revisits, unfortunately. So the administration did a fine job with the budget, so there is no wiggle room. If anything, we should be prepared to make some more cuts once the state gets back to us with their final numbers. Tuesday, June sixteenth, the prior meeting to the council is also canceled because we won't have any last minute motions. We made the motions during the Budget and Finance meeting, or the, the budget meetings. Public hearing is on Tuesday, June sixteenth, and then the special meeting on Wednesday, June seventeenth, to pass the budget. So, um, we are planning on doing a consent agenda for the budget. Any of the departments that I feel, um, should be, um, moved on their own, such as DPW, Water and Sewer, and the school, I will not put them on the consent agenda. If anybody has any requests as to any other department that should not be on the consent agenda, if you could please email the Budget and Finance team and let them know of your concerns or your desire to, um, discuss them further, so I don't put them on the consent agenda, I am happy to do that. But in order to save time and for accuracy, I would rather not do a roll call vote on every one of the motions, we have plenty. So, again, please, there's plenty of time, if anybody has any concerns over the budget or don't want an apartment on the consent agenda, please let me know.
Thank you, Councilor Cox, great job on the update.
Thank you.
And Finance. Um, we're going to move it over to Councilor Pat.
Okay, um, just a couple of things, I'd like to thank the, uh, administration, the, all the first responders, our DPW, our Board of Health, um, Harbor Mass, everybody, uh, for all their continued work, um, trying to work through this, uh, you know, difficult time, and also, I'd like to commend the administration for trying to, uh, start getting our, uh, city back open, and I understand we do have some issues with, you know, the state has, uh, certain standards we have to meet, but, uh, I want to thank the administration for all their efforts, uh, to get our businesses back open, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Holmgren?
I'd just like to thank Mayor Taken and her administration, uh, Chief Conley, and especially all of the teenagers, uh, and their, um, very supportive grownups, uh, for the, uh, courageous way in which they spoke out, uh, uh, to help, um, create more understanding of the Black Lives Matter movement and, uh, why it is so important. So, um, I, I want to thank everybody for the compassion, uh, and the civility with which these demonstrations were conducted in our city, and it just speaks to how strong we are as a community.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Nolan?
I'd just like the entire, like, thank the entire city for how peaceful and how dealt, we, we took care of all these matters in the last few weeks, and it turned out to be a great event, and the support for our officials in the city was excellent.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Gilman?
Thank you, Councilor, I have two things. First, I just wanted to, um, request through our chair, um, that I work with, um, City Clerk's Office to discuss how we can notify the folks at one oh five, Winger Sheep, um, that their public hearing will not invoke, will not be next week on June twenty-third. I just think, you know, at the time where we made it that date, we thought maybe we would be back in a real session, and we had agreed as a council that we wanted to, um, to hold off until we are back in a real session, and we're not, and I just, I would hate to see some of those abutters have to tra- well, actually, no one has to travel, they just zoom on, but, um, since we won't be having it, um, if we could talk offline and talk about how we might want to let those abutters know that they don't have to block that timeout for next week, um, because we're not ready for that public hearing, because we're not back at City Hall. And the other thing I wanted to, um, bring up is just a thank you, um, not only to the mayor and her entire staff, um, thank you so much, Mayor, for doing so much great work for our city, um, but I wanted to give a shout out to, um, our Police Chief, um, Conley, and our Assistant Chief, um, Joe Fitzgerald and his team, for all the due diligence that they've done in, in increasing, um, their presence up at the quarries. They've been there on their ATVs, they've been talking to neighbors, they've been talking to, um, the youth going up there to use the quarries, um, it's been a great feeling of community policing, and, um, and I really appreciate that from the bottom of my heart, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor. Before we adjourn, is there anybody else that would like to say anything?
I would, Eve, after John.
Hold on, Council McCarthy?
Yeah, I'd just like to bring up, I, I know it's Jim's last week, Distino, I'd just like to, to reach out to all the fellow counselors, to wish Jim well in his retirement, and just that, uh, I've worked with him for years, and it's been a pleasure working with him, he's done great things for the city, and I'm sure, uh, he's going to enjoy his retirement fishing here and fishing down in Florida, but I'm sure the mayor's going to miss him in that office next tour.
Thank you, John, I bet you he's going to be just as busy, if not busier, with the little one and fishing and everything else, um, in retirement, so we wish him the best. Mayor?
Yes, and Councilor Cox, I sent you a request to Mike Hale, and I sent it to John Dunn about the, um, I don't know how that changed back.
I don't either.
Yes, so, well, we'll look into that one, because sometimes, um, the people come in. Um, also, um, thank you to all of you, um, it's not been easy at all, um, between the public hearings and what we should do and can't do, and TIPS and, and still trying to keep the city, people don't understand that we've been doing this together as a team, and I keep saying that, it's because we're all on different Zooms, James went tons of Zooms with me, you all have, and hearing the things of what other communities are going through, just the superintendent himself, that we hired, and, and they already did pink slips, and they're doing furloughs, and some people aren't coming back. We're moving forward because, one, we had a border health team, and I can't even say that a thousand times over, that decided was going to hire a nurse, tell us what we were going to need, tell us how we're doing things, um, going ahead of the ballgame, we were doing tracing before we even knew what tracing was, um, the school, school part, they came over and did that, never, ever has anyone have heard, uh, uh, of all this, you know, togetherness, networking, um, our seniors, uh, what can we do? And you all stepped in, well, we'll help our seniors, you do this, we'll do that, I'll do this kind, we'll do that, all of us have taken a role of saying, you know, it doesn't matter where, what city, school, doesn't matter, we need to move forward, we have, because it's, the COVID didn't come with a, a book, no one knew, oh, that's what, this is like the flu, this is like nothing, no one even knew who was going to hit, we were all fighting together in invisible war, it's not over, um, and I understand some of the, you know, it, it's scary, you know, you, you have protests, but then you can't do this, and we have that, and you hear it, and it, you know, we all sometimes hear it and get aggravated, but just so you know, um, Councilor Cox has been walking up and down Main Street, uh, like, uh, she's the chief of police, they all told me, she's asking how they're doing and not doing, and tell them, you can't have that table, and I want to see you get in trouble and everything else, so thank you, because I, they go and, um, yeah, she's been down there, she already knows what new business is opening up, so they call me, oh, Councilor Cox knows before you, I, I don't want to do, that's fine, that, we're all a team in here, that's fine, um, and, you know, Steve LaBlank saying Jamie calling me here, every one of us to do what we can do, we've been working, and they need to know, people don't understand how the protocols are, get that message out, so I did ask, and I hope you can share that, I did ask, no, not me, it's not about me, I asked, um, Joey, um, best things, because he has a lot of followers, to have, you know, Elizabeth Carey from Discover Gloucester, Jill Cahill, what she's doing, and, uh, Ken from the Chamber, not me, them, who are working on the streets, to tell them what we're doing about Main Street, how we want to do it, because a lot of, oh, guess what, this community's doing it, guess what, they had to pull it back, because not all the merchants want it, just because restaurants do, you have to go through the merchants, you have to do that, I'm, you know, I even got, uh, when do we start to ticket people? We, you know what, people, i- i- it's not all, it, uh, a magical wand that they think the City Council and the mayor can do, there's protocols. Even when I wanted to do my own Halloween party, you have to go through protocols, we have an ordinance that was established before we were born, has to keep doing, we change them, but we work together, so I know we get frustrated, and you see me, you know, go on, a- a- and sometimes I over want to joke people, I do, um, on Facebook, but the fact is, I don't care if you talk about me, my staff is working, I could never seen a border health work so much, I can't even tell you, you know what they come up with now, and I know it's kind of whatever, but this morning, we had a call, and they says, we found something else that you can do, you can test by, um, waste, I went, what? Yes, we're going to test the COVID by waste, meaning, they're going to ask the border, the border health's going to go to Mike Hale in a couple of weeks, get this testing, so we'll know what, like, what neighborhoods. And I'm going like, I don't want to know more, joking around, because you know how you say, are you full of what? Okay, yeah, well, guess what, she's already ahead of that, we are so far ahead in trying to do that, you know, our numbers have been great, and, 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 and the numbers that you're seeing that are escalating everywhere, tell people to calm down, that's not because of the protesting that's happened, that's not even for a, a couple more weeks, those numbers have gone up, why? Because we have access now to testing. So when people are telling you, oh, all the numbers are going up because your beach is in this, breathe, those are all happening because we are now testing. Those are people that did have it or have it, whatever, is because you have access to testing. So I wanted to thank you, and also, Jim Distino, for five and a half years, he, I asked him, and the only way I was going to get Melissa's vote for interim is if I had him and, and for a year, and Steve convinced him, but I didn't think it was a bad turnout, uh, was for a year, and, um, it was good five and a half years, he taught us all.
We're lucky to have Jim.
Well, you know what, he taught us all, um, I have the highest respects, he's always there, um, I just want to let the City Council know that I'm giving Vanessa a ninety-day appointment, so you all know that, I don't want you not to know that.
Yay, Vanessa.
Yeah, I have very good faith in Vanessa, um, I, and she's been there by his side, learning things, and, and
Is she going to have an assistant with her on camera?
Yeah, has her own little technique and has everything else, and, you know, we're going to be doing some little things, changes here and there, and, but, we're still going to produce what we're producing, but you know what, I have a good team, I have a good staff, and I have good support with the City Council, I mean, it's changed, I, I think the COVID made us realize, like, you know what, we, today we're here, tomorrow, we don't know who's going to hit, and it's sad, so respect each other today, we'll bitch later, but today, you know, we're doing okay, and I want to thank all of you, too, and if Jim's on here, not on here, Jim, you deserve every moment of enjoying that beautiful
Thank you, Jim, for leaving this city in a great financial
Absolutely, absolutely, and the great team that he's had, so, good night, everyone, be safe, and thank you for being part of this team.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, if there's nothing else, I'm going to, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded.
So moved.
All right, let me call the roll call, Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councilor Pat?
Yes.
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren?
Yes.
Councilor LaBlank, yes. Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Yes.
All right, great job, everybody, tonight, we are adjourned.
Be safe.
I'll see you soon, thank you, everyone.